Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting for the Yukon City Council for January the 5th, 2016 to order. If you would rise for the invocation by Tim Bray from Grace Episcopal Church and remain standing for the flag sleep, please.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we ask your presence with us tonight on our city, our leaders, and our citizens. Send down upon those who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve to promote the well-being of all people. Bless tonight's council meeting, their deliberations and decisions, and give them foresight and courage to faithfully carry out their duties and to work together for all of our common life. May your will and your grace guide us in all we do tonight and in the weeks to come. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please. Alberts?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
McCarron?
Here.
Smystrela?
Here.
Yonda? Presentations and proclamations? Non-agenda. Visitor section. This is the opportunity for people to address the council about non-agenda items. If there are people here this evening that would like to discuss items with the council, this time if you please come forward and announce your name, your address. We have a couple of gentlemen here with the new soccer team. Eric Newendorp?
Close, really good.
Okay, well, I butchered the preacher, so I mean, I kept thinking during your prayer, which was very eloquent and nice. I just know that I, because I put the R by the B, and I know anyway, and I apologize. And DeBray, is it?
Ayala.
Ayala. If you guys would come forward and introduce yourselves.
I'm DeBray Ayala. I'm managing partner for Rio OKC, the new professional soccer team here in Yukon and Canadian County. This is our general manager, Eric Newendorp, and I'd like to start off first by saying thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, but also I'd like to present the city Yukon Mayor Alberts with his inaugural NASL soccer award. Mayor, take care of it, because there's an autograph on here by a player from the New York Cosmos, who was arguably one of the top players in the world for many years, from Spain, played in the national team in Real Madrid, which is considered one of the top of the top leagues in the world. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You guys appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Welcome to Yukon.
We're actually on TV. We're on TV, so if you guys will get close.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, guys. We won't take up too much time. I know we get into some much more important city business here, but appreciate you giving us a couple of minutes. DeBray and I have worked together for many, many years, and Bray's managing partner was kind enough to bring me on as general manager of the team. There's lots of questions you may have about the North American Soccer League as well as Rio. It looks like Mayo, like you might want to say it's a Rayo, but it's a Rio OKC, and where that name comes from, and we can definitely answer those questions if the city council's kind enough. If you want to do a question and answer, if not, you know, you can find out. But essentially, we start play in April. We're going to play in the lovely Yukon High School Miller Stadium, which we're happy to call home, and we're going to hopefully make it a major league professional sports atmosphere for everybody, hopefully in this room, and all your loved ones that are going to come out and support our team. You know, our goal, and it does say OKC in the name, but our hope is that, like they don't call the Dallas Cowboys the Arlington Cowboys, we are Rio OKC, but what we really hope is the good folks of Canadian County really come out and support us as if we are your Dallas Cowboys. We do have season ticket holders already signed up for Midwest City and more and other places, but what we really need and what we really hope for and what we're really going to try to do is be worthy of your, you know, your time, your investment, your affiliation, that you'll want to really affiliate with our team and be proud to call us your hometown team and your hometown pro soccer team, and we're going to live up to that promise and make sure we have a good, family-affordable product for you to come enjoy some time in the spring and summer and a little bit in the fall as well, once we get started here in April. So, we've got a lot of work to do between now and then. We've got a good start. We've got an event coming up on Thursday in downtown Oklahoma City to announce our new head coach, so you'll hopefully hear a lot more about us as the coming months come. And again, we look forward to having you guys out at the games. Obviously, we'd love for you to be members. We're a club, right, so we don't have necessarily season ticket holders. We have members of our club, and so we expect you to have all the rights and benefits afforded to other members of other clubs. So, if you're interested, again, you know, there's plenty of ways you can find out what we can do, and again, we hope to have you guys out. So, DeBray, do you have anything to add or any questions about anything? Anything. Curiousness about whatever. If not, again, you know where to find us, and we'll be happy to answer questions at the time. I'll leave a few of my business cards back here as well, if you'd like to contact me individually, and we have some folders. I know some of you have taken some. Just a basic information and those things about some of our investment levels for our memberships and some of those kinds of things, but like I said, you may have other questions, and just contact us directly. So, any questions from you?
Nice people.
Council members?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll have a game with it. Thank you very much. The person that lasts through this entire meeting, no, it's not that long. It's not that long this evening. That's right. Thank you all very much. Thank you so much. Okay, then at this time, we'll get back to the council business. We'll recess as the Yukon Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. The first item is item 1A. That's the YMA consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda, so the Yukon City Council, by unanimous, I'm sorry, by the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion to approve (a) the minutes of the regular meeting of December the 15th, 2015. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Alberts?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
The next, I'm sorry, at this time, we'll adjourn as YMA and reconvene as the Yukon City Council. The first item on the council agenda is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda, so the Yukon City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve (a) the minutes of the regular meeting of December the 15th, 2015, (b) the minutes of the special meeting of December the 21st, 2015, (c) the payment of material claims in the amount of $482,285.80, (d) designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, donation, or trade, and (e) setting the date for the next regular council meeting for January the 19th, 2016, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers of the Centennial Building, 12th South, 5th Street in Yukon, Oklahoma. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
The next item is two, and that would be the reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. And Mr. Edwards is here this evening, the chairman of the park board. Joe, if you'd come forward and share with us, please.
Okay. Thank you very much. My name's Joe Edwards. I am the chairman of the Yukon City Park Board. At this point, I'm award one appointment by Councilman Russell. Thank you for allowing me to have that opportunity again. Want to be able to thank the council and the city staff for allowing us to have this time in one of the meetings to go over what I think is, you know, one of the big reasons we have such a great quality of life in our city, and that's the Yukon Park and Rec Department. I do have some board members here supporting tonight. As I call your name, if you'll stand up, Joe Baumann, Nick Gerba, and Kathy Wright. I don't think Dayton's here. Again, we would like to thank you guys for appointing us to serve the city in this capacity. It's quite enjoyable, and we get a lot of insights in how the city works and, you know, how we get things done, and the city's been very good to the Park and Rec Department, and hopefully, you know, that'll keep going. First off, I mean, we have 12 parks in our system that total 223 acres. That doesn't cover the recent purchase and annexation of the land west of town for the new sports complex. We do have three main facilities, the Jackie Cooper Gym, the Community Center, and of course, the Dell Robertson Center. So, those are the mainstays of what we have and how we utilize our programs. I will say, I was going through online some of the brochures and things that we have available online, and I think the Yukon City website's a very user-friendly website. I got a lot of information off of that. Within our main facilities, just in the winter and spring brochure that we have, I counted 70 different activities for this six-month period that are for youth, adult, and senior activities. So, we have a lot going on with the facilities that we have. We're utilizing them, I think, almost to the max, if I can say that. As far as our parks and our other and our facilities, within those, we do have multiple local sports clubs and their activities as well that go from basketball, baseball, football, soccer. I don't know if they're still here. You know, that's one of our biggest ones, adult softball, girl softball, BMX bike racing, remote-controlled car racing, and of course, multiple Spirit League opportunities we have, which is a super bonus and says a lot about how the people of Yukon feel about including everybody and that the parks are for everyone. So, another thing that I did find online, you can see this listed, is our special events. Within the year, we host 26 special events with the Yukon Park and Rec Department. That's like one every two weeks, if my math is right. So, some of the highlights are the Yukon Chocolate Festival, which was new. Of course, the Taste of Yukon, we always love to go to. The Yukon Senior Games, which actually draws quite a few people into the town. Festival of the Child is a big event. Of course, we have the Chisholm Trail and Crawfish Festival on the Kilpatrick Land in the spring. One of the big things we have that goes throughout the summer and early fall are the concerts in the park. People really love that. And of course, July 3rd and 4th, we have Freedom Fest, which is just a huge event that draws a lot of people into the city, and that's utilized in our facilities as well. We have Daddy-Daughter Dance, Mummy-Sun Masquerade. When we get around to the fall, we do things like Spooksville at the Community Center, and then, of course, when we get into the Christmas season, the opening of Christmas in the Park and Christmas in the Park, which is one of the largest Christmas events in the state of Oklahoma. It started out with five million lights this year. I don't know what the count is after two ice storms, but yeah. And then, of course, the Merry Christmas Party, Sounds of the Season. So, you can see, there's a lot to do in Yukon. If you want to be involved, we've got 70 programs, 26 special events. That doesn't really cover it all. So, Yukon Park and Rec provides a lot of quality of life. Also, our special events are award-winning. We have award-winning special events. Just to mention a few, I think you have some of this in your paperwork in front of you. In 2015, Frontier Country Marketing Association called Sounds of the Season an outstanding event. It won an award for that. Again, in 2015, the Yukon Chocolate Festival, which was, we tried something new, won Outstanding Food Festival for Frontier Country. The Frontier Country Marketing Association named Yukon the Outstanding Tourism Community for a population over 20,000. The Chisholm Trail Park Gazebo is a top-10 outdoor concert venue for free live music, is listed in Southern Living Magazine. That's national. Also, Red River Marketing Association has voted our fireworks show one of the best fireworks shows that you could see, and it just goes on and on. So, not only do we have a great Park and Rec system, and not only do we have great facilities, we're also getting noticed, and we bring a lot of people into town. Just to kind of give you, and this again is in your paperwork, some highlighted things, some improvements to the facilities we've been able to do with your help. The Robertson Center got a new floor, and they've got some new basketball goals that can be adjusted for youth or adult league. City Park installed irrigation and baseball on the football fields and added some dirt to level the playing surfaces, and that was actually a partnership with some of the baseball parents who helped fund some of that. Our partnerships are really important in keeping the parks going and improving them, and I'll get to that in just a minute. At City Splash, we took out the baby pool, added a large shaded cover area. Freedom Trail Playground got a new pavilion, and they rebuilt the toddler playground. All of the parks have had some kind of landscaping or trees planted. Ranchwood installed an irrigation system, which is very important for the fact that the soccer club uses that area, so they'll be able to maintain that a lot better. At Sunrise Park, we have our splash pad, which I love. You know, we installed two statues and then one in what they call the Butterfly Garden, so it beautified the city. We have new distance signs in certain areas on walking trails. And actually, if you got to go through Christmas in the park before it got shut down by the weather, you might have noticed there was a couple of new Christmas houses. On the trailers, there were displays replacing the old white houses, and city staff had kind of built those. It's going to be a lot more sturdy, and it's going to be able to, it's a lot easier to move in and out. So, you know, that's an improvement there. We've added a little bit of staff, a full-time event assistant to our event division. Our Spirit League increased by a total of 20% participation. Again, that says a lot about Yukon. And the partnerships that we do have and some of the things that are, again, in your paperwork, Integris helped do some landscaping. Canadian Valley Votec helped also do some landscaping. The Yukon High School baseball team came out and gave a day of service to help level the baseball field, so that's the high school coming back to give back to where it all starts and promote baseball. One of the biggest things that we have and one of our biggest partnerships is with Southwest Covenant, the Patriot Project that we have. I think it's the first Saturday usually in November. 800 teachers, students, and parents came out and donated 6,400 hours of park beautification improvements in the main three-park complex we have, and this was the 10th annual year that we've done that. So, that's been just a great partnership with them. And of course, Friends of the Park is an organization that supports all of the park functions. They do fundraisers. One example is they collected 15,289 diapers and donated them to the Children's Rehabilitation Center in Bethany. So, you can see, we're, we've got a lot going on in Yukon Park and Rec, and it's because you guys allow us to do that and support us. And hopefully, like I said, the vision for the Park and Rec Department will, you know, go forward as it has been the last few years. It is a quality of life issue. Now, one of the things being on the park board that we get to do is we work with some really good people from the city, you know, and I'd like to recognize a few of them. And if you're here, I'd like to ask you to stand. Jan Scott, our director, she's always a really hard-working, dream to work with. Claudia Kerska is our deputy director. Sherry Shoemaker, the admin. Quincy Wrinkles, the rec superintendent. Jason Beal is our event superintendent. He does a great job. We actually have a park maintenance division, and that's why our parks look so good. Jeff Deckard's in charge of that. And then our three facility managers, we have Jarrett Kilo at the Community Center, Tim Rhodes at the Jackie Cooper Gym, and Casey Barnett at the Dell Robertson Center. All do a great job, as well do their staff. So, as you can see, the Parks Department is alive and well and providing a lot for the city of Yukon. If you guys have any questions or comments, I'd love to hear it.
Questions? Joe, how long have you served on the park board?
I think this is my 15th year. Yeah. I've been lucky enough to have the incoming council members keep appointing me, so.
Well, I had a chance to serve with you, too, and I'd, I'll tell you, he's very dedicated. He's very organized, and are you still the chairman?
Yes.
And have, well, I guess, if I could read my own daughter, I realize that I called you the chairman while it goes. But you do a great job, and I mean, I enjoyed serving with you, and you are a wonderful asset to the park, to the community, and you're right. I mean, I think it's part of the community that a lot of people see. I mean, everybody is affected by water and the different things, but that's a great positive impact made by 26 different events all through the year.
Yeah, we're out there selling Yukon, you know, 24/7, 365. There's always something you can do in our town.
There is, and we appreciate it very much.
I did have one other thing while I had the council's attention that I wanted to bring up, and it just kind of goes towards budgeting when you guys start thinking about the budget in the future. I've noticed last year that some of the events we have at the DRC, Dell Robertson Center, parking's quite an issue, and I know in the past, there've been plans drawn up to try to address that. I think you have a picture of that maybe in your paperwork up there. We had some complaints about a craft fair earlier in the year about how crowded it was in the parking. We had a craft fair in the fall that I tried to go to and couldn't even get in. I went around and took a picture. It might be the picture you see from the Realtor's Office south of there. People were parking like both sides all the way around the building. People were parking across Yukon Parkway and trying to get across there. It's just kind of a, when we have big events like that and like Taste of Yukon and things like that, it's kind of a safety issue. So, the park board had drafted a letter just as a recommendation, when you guys come to capital improvements, to look at possibly using the land west of the library as additional parking and develop that. The library itself, I know, is quite busy also.
We have that, Joe?
All right. So, I'll leave you with that and...
Here, I think you've certainly earned a shirt since I don't know what game we're going to play, so you want choice or...
Are you going to hand it out?
Well, there's at least, I don't get to do this. There we go. There you go.
Again, thank you, guys, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, guys.
And an excellent report. All right, the next item is three, and that's consider approving a proposal, submit it for the 2015 FEMA assistance to the firefighters grant for equipment purchased for three LifePak systems to replace old units. If awarded, city cost will be $12,322. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Smystrela?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
The next item is four, and that's consider approving ordinance number 1332 and ordinance, amending ordinance number 657, Appendix A of the Code of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, by providing that the zoning designation for part of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 30 Township 12 North Range 5 West, Canadian County, Oklahoma, be changed A agricultural to I-1 light industrial. That's at 1700 West Vandement and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Discussion?
The, there's not a recommendation on the bottom of this. Did this go through the planning commission and everything and I...
Mr. Horton, do you mind?
This went through the planning commission. The ordinance, when we bring the ordinances, sometimes you don't have all the spring information. This is the track. It used to be the ODOT yard is what we call it. They've done a preliminary and final that they're bringing back to the planning commission, but this is the change in the zoning from agricultural to I-1. So, it has been recommended by the planning commission and submitted to the city attorney, and the attorney wrote the ordinance for the zoning change.
Okay, so there's not, but it's already been voted on by the planning commission?
They approved the zoning, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Call the roll, please. McCarron?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Next item is 4A, and that's consider approving the emergency clause of ordinance number 1332. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Alberts?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Next item is item five. Consider approving the final plat of Horizon for attractive land lying in and beginning a part of the northwest quarter of Section 29 Township 12 North Range 5 West of the Indian Meridian, which is 1221 Garth Brooks, as recommended by the planning commission. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion?
This is, this is the rezoning that revolves around the tower, right?
No, this is a final plat for a new Verizon phone store, retail store over on Garth Brooks.
122.
Over by the Canes and Hallmark, the new China grocery store, New China.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was oriented in the wrong place. I read it wrong, so that's my fault. Okay, I know where we are then. Thank you.
Other questions?
No.
Questions? Call the roll, please. Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Six is consider accepting the northwest 10th Street intersection plans and well-field transmission line relocation plans from Check Hall Commons as recommended by the City Engineer and Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, if I might interrupt, the recommendation by the planning commission contained four conditions.
Yes, sir.
It didn't quite make it to the agenda, so I might suggest that any motion be to, if you're so inclined, to accept the plans but with the conditions imposed by the planning commission.
So, may I add to the end of the item, which would include the four conditions recommended by the planning commission?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Sigler, do you mind sharing? Do you have those conditions?
I do. One of the conditions was that the applicant obtain approval by ODOT for their project, for their private detention plans. This project is actually in Oklahoma City, but the detention is important, and so they have to get approval for that. The second one is that the applicant be required to get a drainage acceptance by ODOT because all of the property drains into ODOT right away. The third one is a maintenance bond, which is required by our ordinance, and the fourth one was that they pay the registration and inspection fees.
Okay.
To the city of Yukon that's associated with this project.
Okay. And that, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. McCarron.
Yeah, are there any comment, Robbie, on your part here with that, those words?
Those are my comments. We have reviewed the plans. Oklahoma City has reviewed the plans. However, the drainage does drain into ODOT right away and then on into Yukon, so we just want ODOT to approve what they're doing.
So essentially, we'll be just getting some drainage from...
ODOT, they have submitted their, the plans and the drainage report that Oklahoma City approved, has already approved, and so we're just waiting for ODOT to approve it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Russell?
I'm good.
Smystrela? Call the roll, please. Oh, wait, do we have a motion in a second?
We have a motion.
Call the roll, please. Smystrela?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Next item is seven, and that's consider accepting and approving the permanent easement for the construction of roadway and other improvements to allow the controlled intersection located at Northwest 10th and Check Hall Commons as recommended by the City Engineer and Planning Commission. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. McCarron? I'm sorry. Ms. Yonda, were you here for the beginning of this item, seven?
Yes.
Okay. So, do we include her in the, Mike, do we include her in the vote now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Call the roll. Call the roll, please. McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
The next item is eight, and that's consider accepting the irrevocable letter of credit in amount of $248,061 for water improvements to construct Check Hall Commons as recommended by the Development Services Director. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Alberts?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smystrela?
Yes.
Number nine is consider accepting the irrevocable letter of credit in the amount of $886,242 for improvements of the intersection of Check Hall Commons as recommended by the Development Services Director. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please.
McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Smystella?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Yonda?
Yes.
The next item is item ten, and that's the new business. Any new business? Thank you, sir. Council discussion. Mr. McCarron?
Well, it's been an interesting last couple of weeks, you know, certainly no shortage of storm and ice. OGN E stopped by to see us tonight to say thank you to us for all of the help that they gave them. But for me, I think it's a big thank you to OGN E and all of the other folks that come and, and bring all our power back on and everything else. Several times during my tenure here that they performed extremely well. So I think I'd just like to give a little shout-out to the OGN E people and all those, and especially to the city employees, because his comments were directed to our cooperation with them. And so a lot of our folks here in the city were, are equally important in, in restoring and getting everything back to some reasonable level of normality. And, you know, I think that's it for me, Mayor.
Mr. Russell?
Well, I would also, I'd like to thank Joe Edwards for his many years of service and dedication, and just thank you for his report tonight. I also hope everybody made it through this ice storm. It was a mess. We all hung in. That's it for me.
Ms. Smystella?
Well, I know my electricity was off for about a week. Back, really, around Thanksgiving. Luckily, I had a daughter three blocks away that had electricity. Got to stay with her. But when my power came back on, I went in and I kissed my refrigerator. I was just so.
Did you clean it out first?
So happy to be home. And we thank all of you that worked out in the cold and did do all, all the things you do for the city, and really appreciate it. I'm so proud of everyone, so happy to be involved with this wonderful group.
Ms. Yonda?
I'd also like to thank the citizens of Yukon and the city employees, OGN E, and all those that assisted in the cleanup and the restoration of the electricity in this area. And also thank you to the park board and all those that serve on that. We appreciate your service.
And I'd, I'd just like to say how much I, I really appreciate how hard you all have worked to clean the city. I mean, I see the branches, they go away, they reappear, they go away again. They pile out north of town by the soccer field. It gets larger and larger, and, but I appreciate, and I see that the branches fall off, and apparently the city comes by and picks them up off the trailer, because I drive out by there a lot. So I appreciate just the, the work that they, to make our community, you know, safe, clean, and then to OGN E for the hard work. They came by, like Councilman McCarron said, to say thank you to us. I mean, he took time out to come by and say how easy it was to work with a community like us. And I said, we really appreciated it, because, you know, that helped get the electricity back on and everything. But there's a corporate, you know, entity here in our community that they, I mean, he came by our city council meeting tonight to stop and say thanks. And I thought that was, I thought that was really special. I wish the guys from RAO were still here. I mean, that's another opportunity for our community to shine. I mean, here's an organization that's a, a soccer organization that apparently is, is it the energy that's in the city now? That's supposed to be the next level above them that's here, and, and they want to use our community to be their home. I think it's an excellent opportunity for us to host and, and for you all and everyone to welcome, and for us to shine again. That's another opportunity. As far as the, the community itself and what the city is doing in two thousand and sixteen, this is our first meeting. We started tonight with a meeting at six o'clock, and we've talked for the better part of the first hour, part of the time that we ate. But we talked about the improvements, the capital improvements that are going around, around in the community. We didn't get finished with that conversation, so we adjourned that. We came out here. We're going to pick that meeting back up in a minute and continue to talk about the capital improvements in the community. From that meeting, we're then going to talk about the, some issues with the park and, and different things. I know there's some people here that are probably interested in that. Attorney John Williams, who's our bond counsel, is here, Mr. Sigler, they're here. We're going to continue to work and, and move that project forward. So we've talked so far, I think a minute ago, about fifty-seven million dollars worth of, worth of projects that are on the board in the city of Yukon, you know, through, I think that's twenty-twenty. So there's a lot going on. We're moving forward. We started our search. We're forever grateful for what Grayson did and got us moving and moving forward. And we are. It's two thousand and sixteen. We're continuing to move forward. We're excited about it. We've sent out the information. We're looking for a new city manager. We're hoping that we would have one maybe sometime by the month of February. But we're looking for the right person. So I want the community, the people watching, the people sitting in here to understand, we don't have a spot to fill. We're looking for the right person to go in the right spot to continue to move this community forward. So we may, or we may not, in February have a new city manager. So, but I want you to know that two thousand and sixteen is going to be as great as two thousand and fifteen. We're going to continue to move forward. We want a positive attitude. We appreciate the example that everyone set, working in the ice and the nastiness and the water. And the good news is, it looks like maybe some more's coming, since you guys have a lot of practice, so thank you very much. But we want that to bleed over. I mean, the park and everything, it's a great place to live. Let's make two thousand and sixteen be just the best year ever. You know, Tammy sent me the other day, I hadn't changed my mayor's message. I mean, it's a great place to live. It is, but it's important that you become a part of it. Just like Joe, he had the stump there for a minute, and he took his opportunity to say, hey, build us some more parking spaces. So if you, as a citizen or someone here tonight, if we need one more parking spot at the park for a handicapped person or one, I mean, come and tell us. This is your city and be a part of it. It's a great place to live, isn't it, Rick?
With nothing else before the council, we stand adjourned.